Any discussion on any item on this agenda? Do we have, does any of you have to go earlier? We'll follow that with the deviating agenda if we have to.
Do you want to go for some, I don't have the order list. We've just got the date to go where.
I don't know. I've not talked to him since last week.
Do you know when I'm calling?
I will. I guess it's coming back. And we can't, it's really stressful now. And she's, she's getting. I guess I'm going to get this. But I can't, yeah. You know, it's like, she's, 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 she's out. You know, so. I can't believe someone would help a girl. And I'm saying, what, 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 we're still in trouble. Look, we kind of, it's always stressful. Yes. She says, I'm feeling good. So I'm just like, I appreciate it. I'm sure she's. Is he doing Jesus? Pretty pretty. It's like, yeah. I'm surprised because. We're scared. Okay, we're scared. So I'm. I'm checking. I see. I check. I can't be honest. Can we run? Turn on. They got. So could be. She could. So he says, I'm sorry. Turn on. So we could try. So leave. When you promise. Where'd you do? Where'd you go to? That's what he said. That's what he said. Of course. It's a covered part. Thank you.
How much it turns?
Holy shit.
They got a monopoly on the data.
Sure did. You get set for it.
I can give you the email address. Start with cost, but it's. Hands in Gmail. We could get a 50% increase, I can work that out.
It's about a hundred.
I haven't had a chair position for a minute.
That is a.
Wish I didn't come on my yard.
Three hours after. We have to send. Something. So that's not a repelling.
That's why I was starting on a seat. But actually, we're in public, you know, so I work on. She kept me on the other side of the. They don't all pay to watch, so how does it go into the same place? We run, we run five copies of these builders to see if they'll pay or not. Last spring. Vacation will be the softball, baseball, basketball, football games.
You lucky hell.
Not professional one either.
Oh, you know, the future, I can go there.
I mean, you work with them. Yeah.
We should tell them this. What did you tell them? So I'm like, I'm told I can. Okay. I have to watch them. We need to. Just. Because they can, they know what they're gonna do. Yeah. Just. Right there for the association. It was a collection. I think it's. And we, we still. And I. Just. We just, we just wanted to make sure you had. I wouldn't.
Vans is like.
And the radar pattern. Shit.
I like the road second. All in favor? Got three more. L L P are not there in the project.
Yes, that's me.
Just read across them. She is broke.
Oh, I get road crossing, I do.
Yeah, I think that blanket is cheap.
Over in the blanket. Man, I'm dead.
Just excited, yeah. We were noisy, you wanted to get us out of here, huh?
No, 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 not really.
You know, that's, that might be mine either.
If we had it, get the hell out.
Thank you.
Be careful here.
We have to catch ourselves. We pulled your glass and give it a glass. Have a screw back. Oh, and now, hell, he can find that and see it. I don't know, but. Keep your car.
Well, somebody said you have a screw loose. My fear is in your glasses.
Open mouth and injure. Be quick.
Are we recording this?
These are the sheriffs, don't sign them.
I don't know, we checked the.
The sheriffs, don't sign them.
All right. Road crossing for me. Hang on, we missed. Should get a ticket, I don't know. Who better than her? Where they go. No demon. Twenty-nine, twenty-seven, we're at the draft line. I'm moving to get the.
I'm very glad.
I thank you. All in favor? Now we're down to the. We need.
All right, so. Okay, you all met, but I'm Eleanor, I need more time. I just want to come, kind of give everyone an update. I already got to. We were supposed to start construction in August, so this month. And we are just a bit delayed. The project's still happening, we're still building. But we've had mitigation conversations and talks with Vance Air Force Base and with the military that it has taken a bit longer than I think both parties were expecting. And the reason for that is, you know, we're on a crunch timeline and the military has ten of us to deal with, right? Multiple wind companies, multiple projects all across the country and here in Oklahoma. So it's just taken a little bit longer to figure out than we would have liked, but, um, so it's still happening, there will still be construction here. And if anything, El Alfa County will be getting more turbines. So more revenue from the county, which is a good thing, since we're already here, we'll get more benefit from it. That will just mean we'll have to come back to y'all and figure out what the roadie agreement looks like and how we're gonna update it. Redo the haul route. Kind of reopen the agreement that we have right now. So that's the, that's the gist of it. If you have any specific questions, yeah.
How close are we to the new steel homes?
To homes? We have fourteen hundred foot setback.
Fourteen hundred?
So the industry standard is only twelve hundred, but with the, with the turbines, you know, demand is twelve hundred.
Do you have guys out now in countries from Maine?
Absolutely.
Has most of the discussion with Vance regarding wind turbines in major county?
So they're actually in mostly Garfield County.
Garfield, okay.
It's just the proximity to the base. I think what happened was Vance had been okay with all the wind turbines and all of the development that had been happening in the area. And then with, I don't know if all of you are aware of like the tax credits that deal with wind, but they're rolling off next year. And that usually means wind companies want to get most bank trip up now. And so they got a flood of requests for wind turbines and I, what happened was Vance looked at it and said, oh my God, what is happening here? We're not, we're not ready for this all of a sudden. So they kind of did a reaction that was just a full stop, you know, stop on the break. And then started picking work back up. And so now we're working through it and we're working through it, which is great, you know? We're, we're trying to hear what they want and at the same time make sure that our development and our, uh, investment is, is sound. So it's mostly Garfield area. They were just kind of like, oh my God, there's all these magics coming up, what's happening?
So you said this, you were supposed to have a start date in August. Have you guys even kind of talked about a start date now?
We have to start before February of next year. Or everything I just mentioned with tax credits and things like that don't necessarily work for us. So we will, that's our drop dead, we cannot push further past that.
Date?
I'm hoping we'll start in November. Usually if we start in November, it's kind of more difficult just because of all the holidays and the cold weather and the crowd. So we'll see, but it's definitely gonna be before February 2020 we'll be done. If that's the case, latest will be done is June 2020. So really just look at six months to live outside.
And I told you the press, the NPR interview to Nancy about the uptake of the new Western bombers.
Yep.
In Anadarko.
Yep.
So the energy, the electricity generated here is gonna go to Oklahoma customers. I love it, Oklahoma wind, Oklahoma electricity, Oklahoma customers. And the project, they're gonna be combining it with the solar, the batteries.
And battery.
So it will be the largest hybrid project in the country, but normal in legal world.
Yeah. So huge.
That was a big project, I thought, I'm like.
Yes. Well, that's what we wanted you to know as soon as it was public, that this is going, you're just gonna send your son and wind down to Anadarko and they're gonna send back money. It's a win-win, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
It's Oklahomans helping Oklahomans. Your, your son and your wind.
Exactly.
Going down there, they're turning on the air conditioning and saying, thanks a lot, here's some money. It ain't here better than this project.
That, that was a big project.
And it's a huge project. I mean, this, this project, you know, I, people sending me articles from Australia about Skeleton Creek Wind Solar Storage, just because it's such a new, huge, big deal. creek wind, solar and storage, just because it's such a new, huge, big deal. So, this is something that's extremely important to me because I've been working on it for so long, but also because it does have all of this media hype around it, you know? I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure that this is smooth and easy.
So, the solar, you said, is a solar-wind combo?
Solar-wind storage, so the big battery on sites.
Okay, so where are the solar panels going to be located? Are they pretty much near the turbines or?
So, they will most likely be straddling Garfield, uh, Garfield, El Falfa County, but they'll be near the wind project boundary.
But a solar project is a big, single installation, it's not like the...
No, this is more than installation, that's...
Yeah.
An acre.
So, it depends, usually, just because on like how much the sun shines at that spot, we usually say, for easy math, ten panels per megawatt.
And how many solar megawatts?
Two-hundred and fifty.
So, you're looking at two-thousand-five-hundred panels?
Or, sorry, uh, ten acres per megawatt.
Oh, okay.
So, two-thousand-five-hundred acres is a high estimate.
On the solar?
And that's not necessarily contiguous, right? That's just the footprint, so, you know, there are other electrical components, inverters, the substation, stuff like that.
And then, there'll be the battery storage?
Also, which is, the whole thing takes five acres, ten acres max.
And all of those are taxable by head of line tax? Or are they all on the public works?
No, no, so the solar panels will be, depending on the lease structure with the landowner for the battery, if they want to sell it to us, or if they just want to lease it, but they should all be head of line, right?
Battery takes ten acres. Pardon me?
She said five?
Five, ten, battery takes five.
Five to ten acres, yeah.
And then, five acres for the substation?
Five acres for the sub.
How far is your setback from Kegelman?
Well, we're, we're not near it, so we're outside of the setback at the radar mandates. We're like fifteen miles away.
That is a lot, you see.
Yeah.
So, Eleanor's, or I guess you have put El Falfa County on the map. Now, she has to do is keep her word and get it built. Well, we want that substation here, not in Garfield.
We want the substation here.
Yeah, can we do that?
I'll see what I can do. It's always good to know what you guys want, so.
Your odds are probably pretty good on the wind substation.
Well, that's really it, I just wanted to come and, you know, if you weren't seeing trucks or construction, here's why. We're down a good path, you know, I'm confident in this project, in my abilities, in Terry's abilities, so.
We're sorry it's taken longer, Eleanor just keeps making it bigger and better.
It just gets better.
That's what I'm saying, she says, "I will put it off two months, but I'm going to throw this in."
Better, more complicated, more headaches.
I did talk to the superintendent last week and he said he wasn't going to be able to make it, to relate superintendent, and he said he would rather it be bigger and take an extra pieces, so, so he's, he knew, he had heard, he would have talked to him, but he said he's, he's excited that it's getting bigger because he needs it.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, El Falfa County, El Falfa County will definitely be the majority of this project.
Wow.
So, it didn't start like that, but the way that it's ending, it will hands down be.
According to phone conversation, I had, I think, three weeks ago, in that neighborhood, of course, you've got to add more paperwork and all that too. I understood that, but paperwork.
Always paperwork.
So, but I, I think it definitely applies.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
We'll want to use the same form of merger agreement, the same merger agreements that's in sign, but just amend it, obviously, with the new site plan and a new haul room and all of that. That's a plus, that we've already got all of that negotiated and signed, so we know what they're going to be doing and what, you know, the county will know what's going to be going on when it does start.
And I'll come back out here one more time on the, for the meeting and make sure that, when I have a firm start date, when I have firm details and execution, you can come out and talk about it. If there's something that you guys want to do beforehand, or if there's a tour you wanted to make or take people out on, or whatever, it is really anything your heart desires, then that would be...
Just don't bust it, women.
No?
No, we don't combust it.
Got it. But, yeah, so, that's all. Any last questions or?
Martin, that might end all with you.
There will be some turbines that go south into Major County now, so Major County's going to be getting a little bit.
They have like four turbines though.
Yeah, not very much, but, so, that'll kind of give you an idea of what the pattern will look like, that it'll be in Marvin's district and then go south, that's the current plan.
Alright.
Cool.
Cool.
Well, it's time to get to the other play. You already, you have a question?
Yeah, right. Okay, well, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we'll take no action on it today, you think it's not quite there.
Well, we did call back again and we did hope someone to work on the specs, but we said there's just no guarantee that they'll have it. So, we'll just take no action.
No action on that, I'm going to future think of it. Written quote, we just took one. For bringing labor and equipment. We sent three quotes, we got one back, we sent a quote to Zull Brothers. They did not respond, even two smaller projects for them, and we sent one to...
And...
It's a new company, it's called Coal Construction, and they took the place of, uh... Do what, Professor Wilson? No, downtown, they're out there now, this company, they're taking over, in the name of it. It's not calm, it's, uh, well, anyway, to me, they... Newton here, we didn't send a bid in there. We got a bridge, we got a bridge right now, they go to probably five feet. And I'm, I'm moving, we said, Red Dean, two or one bridge is, the first bridge is twenty-six thousand for labor and equipment, a thirty-foot bridge, a twenty-foot bridge is twenty-three thousand for labor and equipment. I'm going to intercept that quote here, but, uh, certainly, all in favor? The first one was twenty-six thou, or twenty-three thousand. Or twenty-six, and second was twenty-three.
You can wear around with the head dogs?
Yeah. That, that's an old copy. Declaration of Surplus for the year three, four, fourteen years back.
It was raining when we met. I met her on the corner.
Did you sit on that on the way up here in the seat?
It was raining Thursday when I met her and she was trying to explain everything and it was raining on us.
I'm moving, check the Declaration of Surplus. Physical year eighteen, eighteen of the nineteen schedule expenditures of federal warrants, S E F A.
I did text Robin just to see if she was off on vacation, but she's heading to a few months, so, we're just taking no action.
So, we'll activate no action on that, okay.
I thought it could be a quick question that she could just answer over the phone and...
Well, I, I can't see what to answer either. You can, so, the ordinary, no acting.
I don't, I said it was a year ago and I didn't write down my pile, they came up with that amount, so...
Any of the same business, I'm moving, we're going, all in favor?